Call the October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one Apopka City Council meeting to order. Commissioner Smith, if you give us the prayer pledge and fact of the day, please, sir.
Let's assume that to the prayer. Most gracious on my father, we come once again to say thank you for all the bonds for blessing you bestowed upon us for this opportunity to come once again to protect the business of this city. We ask you continue to guide us and to lead us, guide us, and direct us in the way that you would have us to go. We pray of the Father that your presence will be felt here in this chamber as we protect the business of this city. We ask for all your guidance and leadership in thy son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our plaque for the day, October the seventeenth, seventeen seventy-five, the Continental Congress authorized construction and administration of the first American naval force to pursue to the United States Navy. In November, the Continental Navy was formally organized. During the American Revolution, the Continental Navy successfully commandeered many British merchant ships and won several victories over British warships. This first naval force was disbanded after the war. What is now known as the United States Navy was formally established with the creation of the Federal Department of the Navy in April seventeen ninety-eight. Fact of the day.
Everybody's had a chance to look at the minutes? If so, like the motion approved? So moved?
Just one little thing, on the public comment, the very first paragraph, I think it was meant to say, say he wanted to read some marketing statements, just says he wanted to have some, I think it just was a mixture of words.
So where are you, Commissioner?
The very first public comment, Mr. Olson's, the very first lines, said he wanted to have some marketing statements, I think it's supposed to read, he wanted to read some marketing statements.
Okay.
So just a minor rule tweak.
Okay, that minor tweak, we have a motion by Commissioner Bankson. Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries now. Okay. Let's see, proclamation. Everybody knows this is National Hispanic Heritage Month, so we have a proclamation I would like to read. We have a lot of, not only employees, but a lot of people that live here in the city that have Hispanic backgrounds, and so we just want to honor them with this proclamation. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the accomplishments of Hispanic Americans who have enriched our culture and society and helped make America into the incredible country it is today, and whereas Hispanic American men and women embody the American values of devotion to faith, family, hard work, and patriotism through their countless contributions as leaders, innovators, entrepreneurs, and members of our armed forces, and whereas our Hispanic community brings a rich cultural heritage representing many countries, ethnicities, religious traditions that are interwoven into the fabric of America, and whereas our Hispanic community has a profound influence on our city and country by enhancing and shaping our national heritage with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their communities, and whereas this month we honor Hispanic Americans for their countless contributions to our nation. Through their dedication to family, community, and our country, they helped to build a better future for all Americans. To honor the achievements of Hispanic Americans, the Congress by Public Law one hundred dash four oh two, as amended, has authorized annually a proclamation designated in September fifteenth through October fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of Apopka, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, here in Apopka, and call upon public officials, educators, librarians, and all of Apopka's to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. Okay. Thank you. All right, Edward, as far as agenda review?
There are no changes to the agenda, Mayor.
All right, public comment, Susan.
Kim Bukhite, sixty-five hundred Swain Road, Apopka. Good evening, everyone. First, I originally thought that the future of the defunct Rock Springs Ridge Golf Course was just a Rock Springs Ridge issue, but since there is a City of Apopka real property asset that has been said to be essential for this deal, all City of Apopka taxpayers and residents should take an interest. In previous meetings, we have heard the mayor and city attorney say that there is nothing going on here, but that doesn't square with the city's official website. You can see this for yourself. If you go to the City of Apopka website, select Community, select Rock Springs Ridge, under Coming Soon, the second bullet says, and I checked this up to just a few minutes ago, three-way agreement with Delarussue, City of Apopka, and Rock Springs Ridge. The website clearly indicates that an agreement is in the works, and the City of Apopka is a party to it. This is a problem that I cannot adequately address in four minutes. Something smells fishy. There needs to be some accountability for the conflicting information and confusion that persists and continues to be perpetuated on the city's official website. If someone made a mistake on the website, let's get an explanation and correct the error. Second, for background, I'm a licensed professional land surveyor with thirty-eight years of experience interpreting deeds and matters of title. I am also an advocate for protection of gopher tortoises, their habitat, and conservation lands in general. I provided a few documents to the clerk for you from my preliminary research. You can read these items for yourself, but I'll walk you through a few highlights. Rock Springs Ridge HOA took title to conservation parcels in two thousand five. Those conservation easements were created in nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand two and are referenced in the deed. All restrictions run with the land and transfer to successors and assigns. They don't go away just because somebody sells the property. For the fifty-one acre conservation area, basically the restrictions say that you can't build on the land or disturb the wildlife habitat. Parties can request to release the conservation easement according to a process administered by Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. FWC's policy for easement release, easements and releases is eight pages. I included that with what I gave you. Look at Section B for requirements to release easements. FWC has no obligation to agree to any release. Avoiding and minimizing impacts must be considered, and replacement land must be proposed. Additional compensation may be required, and up to three times the area may be required for replacement land depending on the quality. In reviewing the materials that Rock Springs Ridge HOA had published on their website and from discussions with residents about what was provided before they voted to sell the fifty-one acre parcel, the conservation easement restrictions and ramifications of complying with FWC's easement release policy were completely disregarded. The bottom line is that the true cost of the deal is not being considered, and the financial analysis is flawed from the start. In addition, it does not appear that Rock Springs Ridge residents or the general public are being provided with factual information about the complexity of what is being proposed. Before this gets any worse, I just ask one simple thing. If the Rock Springs Ridge Golf Course deal is going to be updated, whatever you want to call the discussion, it needs to be on the agenda so we can all have a fair chance to address our concerns. This has not been handled well so far, in my opinion. We need to do better, and I am confident that we can if we set our minds to it. I'm in favor of maintaining green space, and I personally support community efforts to prevent increased density in Rock Springs Ridge or anywhere else that we have defunct golf courses in central Florida, and I ran out of time for my last sentence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sonia Newman. Hi, my name is Sonia Newman. My husband and I have been here for about eighteen, nineteen years. We're both retired military, and we live on Rock Springs Ridge. I'd like to address something that was said. It was, quote, "You serve all the people, not just Rock Springs Ridge." You say it's not fair to the rest of the residents. To me, isn't this a socialist view? You try to level the playing field. Do you believe in capitalism? Capitalism meaning that we've worked hard to make sure that we live the lifestyle that we live on Rock Springs Ridge, and I'm sure some of you are enjoying it right now. And we, our home values have increased as a result. Now, we pay a lot higher taxes than most people do on Rock Springs Ridge, anywhere from three to five to six thousand dollars. Now, serving the needs of the people, working through the process, is part of the solution. You want to be greedy, however, it's best served, because it's best serves all of Apopka, but you are neglecting the fact that Apopka is invested in the highest value community, which is our community. You want to destroy or improve all of our investments. The homes on average range from five to seven hundred thousand plus. You're proposing spending millions of dollars on the North Star project when you paid, when this group have paid little taxes and we have carried out the load, yet you don't have the funds to pave the roads and the streets. Rock Springs Ridge isn't even asking for money. We are paying our own way and just simply need your support. You should appreciate who we are and what we have achieved in our home values. We need to keep the community as the PUD intended. We need to stop the development threats. We need our own land, and we need the city to serve this community, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Timothy Andre, four zero five three, Rock Hill Loop. Mayor Nelson, City Commissioners, my fiancee Katie and I moved to Apopka in May of two thousand twenty because we were looking to settle down and find our forever home. Both transplants from the Northeast, Katie from Massachusetts, myself from New York, didn't really know what we were looking for in a Florida home, other than air conditioning. Over the first few months in two thousand twenty, we traveled around the greater Orlando area looking at homes. There were plenty that we liked, but none made us say, "Let's do this." At this point, well into the pandemic, we saw a listing in Rock Springs Ridge and said, "Let's go take a look." We knew from the pictures this could be something special, large lots, mature trees. It actually felt like the neighborhoods we grew up in. We knew moving in that the golf course wasn't operational when we moved in, and that it would be a Herculean effort, no matter what was or was not on the table for negotiating, but it was something worth investing in. Fast forward to today, the opportunity to be understood, sorry, the opportunity to be understood as not a promise, common areas, amenities, even a golf course is still alive despite what may be said here, or on next door, or behind closed doors. The community of Rock Springs Ridge overwhelmingly voted to empower the HOA Board to take the steps necessary to secure the golf course property for our future. That vote is more than just a formality. It's our neighborhood's voice, saying to the board, the golf group, the city council, and the City of Apopka, "We want this." We want this because it's a greener future for ourselves and the city. A development in the city is expected, in areas it's needed, but what it can't be is a free-for-all to strip every piece of green space away from residents. There has to be reason, engagement, and willingness to compromise. We need hard solutions, not soft opinions in politics. We need to get together in a room and solve this. Been part of the community for just over a year and a half now. This issue's been going on for over a year, strongly for the last nine to ten months. We can solve this, let's just get in a room and solve it, please. Thank you.
Darrell Clark. My name is Darrell Clark. My wife Laura and I live on Rock Creek Street in Rock Springs Ridge. Although I don't believe I will have any new or enlightening comments to add to tonight's discussion that others have not or will not already cover, I felt it was important to be here in person to help represent the eighty-two percent of voting RSR residents who have given our HOA Board the overwhelming approval to move forward with the opportunity to gain control of the inactive golf course once and for all. As you know, the chance to acquire the Harmon Road property with funds from a potential sale of RSR land that borders Kelly Park Road is an integral part of this opportunity. I understand that no contracts have been signed for any of these transactions, so this is hardly a done deal, but I also believe that our HOA Board did not have the authority to enter into any contracts prior to receiving HOA approval from its residents. I also understand that subsequent, that subsequent to the RSR vote, one of our residents who opposes this course of action has unexpectedly proposed an offer for the Harmon Road property from a different buyer. I personally find the timing of this offer to be interesting and wonder as to the true intent and/or motivation of the individual in the group. However, be that as it may, I urge our mayor and commissioners to consider all aspects relative to the sale of Harmon Road. Agreeing to sell the property to the RSR HOA may not generate the sales revenue that could potentially be realized, assuming the new offer were to go through to an actual purchase, but your residents did not vote you in just to raise as much money as possible. You were entrusted to oversee the management of our city, which includes responsible growth, balancing development while maintaining the rural country appeal of our fine city, ensuring Apopka's growth does not get out of hand, leading to more traffic than our streets can handle, overcrowded schools, straining our infrastructure such as utilities and sewer systems, as well as straining other city services such as refuse, police, fire, et cetera. Oh, and by the way, one way to generate increased city funds for the long term is to drive property values higher, resulting in higher annual assessments and more tax dollars paid. If our HOA is unable to gain control of the golf course, we know the chances increase exponentially that the property will eventually be developed. If not under your watch, then possibly under the watch of our future city leaders. If this happens, Apopka not only loses more green space, but will experience additional traffic, even more crowded schools, and a real strain on the city's infrastructure and services. It will also drive down the property values of over thirteen hundred Apopka homeowners, and how might all of this impact potential homeowners when deciding whether to live here or in another town? As I stated before, I know there is no guarantee that any of this land sale, land purchase, land swap proposal will be realized, but if we lose even the opportunity to purchase Harmon Road property, then it will certainly be dead in the water. One final comment before I close, there are many who are asking what the HOA will do with the golf course land if we're able to gain control. Honestly, I believe that question to be a moot point until we can actually control the property, because we certainly can't do anything until that time. However, the answer to that question is that there are many options that can be explored, some of which may be in conjunction with the city for the betterment of all Apopka residents. I, for one, would look forward to hearing from anyone who has any idea or thought as to how that property could be best utilized. As an RSR and Apopka resident, I urge you to grant our HOA the chance to pursue this one-of-a-kind opportunity before, before us by granting us the ability to purchase Harmon Road property at a fair price. It may not be the easiest thing to do, but it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Chase, Rock Springs Ridge resident, Rock Springs Ridge Vice President on the Board, and Realtor. If I can approach, I have a little packet for everybody.
Sure. Susan, Susan.
Since I'm a Realtor, I often get multiple offers on my listings, so a lot of times when I'm reviewing them with owners, I sometimes have to explain that the highest offer isn't always the best offer because there are dollars in the details. So if you, the page one, if you go to, there's a property, a townhouse, that's new construction, Smuggler's Cliff Cove. It's about fifteen hundred square feet. They're selling for about four hundred thousand dollars. The next page is a home that I found in Apopka. It was built and closed in two thousand and nineteen. I've highlighted that page. It is homesteaded. Their original tax bill was, you know, seven hundred and forty-four dollars, and then, of course, when they got their real tax bill, it jumped up to three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three. This house was sold for two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. So the difference between our offer and the offer that you have, or the intent or whatever that you've got, they can send you an offer for ten million dollars, it's still not going to be better than our offer. Our offer includes the development on Kelly Park, okay? So now you've got two neighborhoods, and going through the math of this process, I definitely understand why developer-friendly. So basically, our two-point-five-million-dollar offer with the development of six twenty-four West Kelly Park Road is worth more than your five-million-dollar offer on the table, worth more than a ten-million-dollar offer on the table. If you take that at a low, and I went conservative, if new construction was three hundred thousand dollars, which you can't even find today, that tax bill would likely be three thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, okay? And that's of two thousand twenty-one today. Two hundred and fifty new homes, so at nine hu, so the City of Apopka gets twenty-six percent of every tax bill. So you get nine hundred and eighty-six per home, times two hundred and fifty-six homes, which is two hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred and forty-five per year. After ten years, that second subdivision is going to bring the City of Apopka two million four hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars in value. Twenty years, almost five million. Fifty years, a little over twelve million. In addition, it brings revenue to Orange County. They get twenty-seven percent of the tax bill. So that equates to a thousand twenty-four per home, times two fifty is two hundred and fifty-six, zero twenty-seven per year. Ten years, two-point-five million. Twenty years, five-point-one million. Fifty years, twelve-point-eight million. State public schools also get money from that tax bill. They get twenty-three percent. So at ten years, you're bringing them in two million one eighty. Twenty years, four million three hundred and sixty-one thousand. Fifty years, over almost eleven million. Local Apopka schools, our schools right here, get twenty-one percent of that tax bill. So you are bringing in eight hundred, almost seven hundred and ninety-six fifty-three per home, two hundred and fifty homes, so basically two hundred thousand a year. Ten years, almost two million dollars. Twenty years, almost four million dollars. Fifty years, almost ten million dollars. So by having this, accepting our offer and having this second neighborhood, because we would, we're selling it for it to be developed, in ten years, the revenue, which is one of the biggest part of your duties, you'd be bringing in ten, almost ten million dollars. Twenty years, eighteen million dollars, and in fifty years, forty-five, forty-six million dollars. So I ask you to look at the details. I understand you want to be good stewards of the City of Apopka, so our offer brings in way more dollars than a five-million-dollar offer that brings you nothing for the future. That doesn't include any improvement to Rock Springs Ridge, should we own the land. We've had a golf group approach us already who wants to develop eighteen holes at their cost with no mandatory fees. So we have an opportunity to reopen Rock Springs Ridge as what it was intended to be with golf, and then have nine holes of green space for these homeowners, which we have thirteen hundred and twenty residents, and the biggest piece of land that we have to socialize is the roundabout.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
David Hoffman, thirty-six ten, okay, thank you, thirty-six ten, Tayside Court. At a recent city commission meeting, one city commissioner expressed disapproval of city efforts to help Rock Springs Ridge defend off any further residential development through a city-aided pathway for our community to own the closed golf course property. This commissioner claimed to represent all of Apopka City, not just Rock Springs Ridge. This statement is a head-scratcher, a defiance of logic and reason. What does it even mean? Let us deconstruct this statement by invoking historical examples. After the terrorist attack on the Twin Towers in New York City of September eleventh, two thousand one, naturally Manhattan, New York City, and New York State called upon Washington and President George W. Bush to help contain and resolve a stunning crisis. But maybe President Bush could have stated that he was president of all of America, not just New York City. Thus, there would be no help for New York. After a devastating hurricane struck Louisiana and New Orleans late last summer, predictably, Louisiana Governor and New Orleans Mayor asked help for Washington. But what if President Joe Biden had simply said, "I am president of all of America, not just Louisiana. Help from Washington? No way." Conversely, conversely, when the COVID-nineteen pandemic struck America with force, starting prominently in March two thousand twenty, President Donald Trump took a position that the battle to quell this pandemic was responsibility of the governors, not the president, not Washington. He would not hold himself responsible. The result, the most devastating death hole in American history, over seven hundred thousand. It's not up to Washington to help. I stand for everyone, yet no one, except me. Truly nihilistic. Is this what the commissioner claims? I'm a commissioner of all of Apopka, not just Rock Springs Ridge? Translation, I represent all of Apopka residents, and yet, none of them. What does constituent service, that is democracy, even mean at Apopka City Hall? This commissioner needs a wake-up call. Rock Springs Ridge homeowners, taxpayers, and voters have been experiencing an existential threat to our community for twelve and a half long years, at least. Apopka City officials have been AWOL in fulfilling their obligation to help us. You face a binary choice. Now, you can help Nick Nesta, a good old boy real estate speculator, to vastly enrich himself at our expense, or you can stand up for thirteen hundred and twenty homeowners who simply want to sustain the character, identity, and value of the community we paid for. You may want to deduct the responsibility, but we will hold you responsible, and we have our rooms, rooms ready for housecleaning.
I'll take, I'll take the opportunity real quick, since I was, in a roundabout way, referenced during the comments of the public speaker just now, but I find it actually in poor taste and disgusting that you would compare me and my comments around this situation to anything related to the vicious and horrible acts that happened on nine eleven. It's in poor form. You can have your opinion about how my comments were interpreted in the last meeting, and I'll double down on those comments because I stand by them, because you have a document in Rock Springs Ridge right now that is the prevailing document that limits the amount of development that can go in that neighborhood. And the green space, the golf course is all part of that PUD when, when approved, and the third installment, that's currently approved. So, and your four minutes are up, but you're making reference to comments that I made last week, and I find it in poor taste.
No, no. Okay, next up, Susan.
John Horton. My name is John Horwath. My wife and I, my wife and I live at thirty-six forty-nine Rolling Hills Lane, and it's a great place. Thank you to Mayor Nelson, who has carried a torch for Rock Springs Ridge in assisting the HOA and residents with the resolution to owning the green space and stopping any development threats to our community. The software on the table allows the residents to control our own future, better maintain the golf lands, and to improve the community image and property values. To be vibrant neighborhood, for, for, yeah, for twelve years, the residents have been stressed, threatened. We had development hung over our heads for years, and this council has the opportunity to correct all the wrongs. to correct all the wrongs, errors, and unjust sacrifices we have made, such as no green space as the PUD requires and entitles the residents. How long can you say no to the development applications? Are you willing to use taxpayer dollars to defend Rock Springs Ridge development rights when the golf group takes you to court? Will you win? Is it worth the risk and taxpayer dollars? What advice would the city attorney give, knowing without this deal that the direction we are heading into? Rock Springs Ridge has funded its own solution. We aren't asking the city for money, and we are paying appraisal value for Harmon. It is time to end the development of Rock Springs Ridge. I've heard several commissioners say we serve the city. I'm a veteran. I served our country. I served through working and helping those close to me. I never, I never hid behind. I can't do that because it doesn't help everyone. In helping those closest to me, I served and made a stronger country. Mayor Nelson, your actions have earned you respect and a new voter base. We all thank you.
Thank you.
Nick Nesta, Rock Springs Ridge resident. I like hearing my name a lot. It's a good thing. Wanted to come up, just provide a couple of different updates for you guys. A little bit different than what has already been presented. Again, I provide things in black and white. I'm transparent. There's nothing that isn't down the road. I've already given it to you. So I want to go over the offer that I originally presented. It was for 4.964 million, all cash. I presented two more this past Friday because as much as it's appraised value, the appraisal is clearly wrong. Market's dictating a much higher price. So $5 million is our next offer. They have a longer due diligence period, so not in love with that one. And then we have a $5.25 million offer as well. Again, longer due diligence, so not in love with that one either. So there may be a little meat on the bone on a couple of these, but we definitely have opportunities. So I come up here to speak about resolutions, fixing this. We actually have an offer on the table, offers on the table, different than what else has been presented, which is all hearsay. And it's just funny to me, too, personal comment, that we're not for development unless we're going to be making a lot of money on it. So it's interesting that the Rock Springs Ridge residents are all for development, for the Gulf of Tortoise land, but not for a land that you guys own and can profit on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a sneezing fit here, so bear with me. Today's Orlando Sentinel. It might behoove you to look at that. This goes, there's an article in there about Deer Run and Wakava Golf Course. And it is very similar, Mayor, to your Stony Brook presentation made by Dennis Armstrong. And what's common amongst them is orphan golf courses that are taken over by either the city or the county, redressed, fixed up, and sent back to the HOA at no cost to the HOA. The membership would be assessed basically $85 to $100 per year for 15 or 20 years for that, to take that land back and to use the golf course as scheduled. The unique thing about Wakava and Deer Run, which is also owned by Bob Delarussue's company, is the Deer Run property, 18-hole golf course, is going to be redefined as a common open land area use on the property. The Wakava Golf Course is going to be upgraded and extended into a better golf course. And together, what they are proposing is what we, as a subdivision and a community of Rock Springs Ridge, are proposing. We propose to secure the rights to the golf course lands through the purchase of, or through the sale of another piece of property, use those funds to buy the golf course lands. The golf course lands will be repurposed, possibly as part of a golf course. 27 holes we have, we might be able to do nine, we might be able to do 18 with the groups that we're talking to. But basically, we would keep at least a third of that for open park recreation lands for our community. As you know, or may not know, there's been a lot of dispute around the history of the development of Rock Springs Ridge. And, and as such, there's a lot of questions about the land area, the open land area, the recreation lands that have been co-located on the golf course, which have been then sold away from our community. And essentially, the bottom line is, we have no open recreation lands. If we wanted to have a picnic, I would have to call the mayor up and say, "Can I come over and use your backyard and spread my blanket out and have a picnic?" There are no recreation lands. And that is, that is an abuse that we've had to deal with for 25 years, and certainly since the HOA was turned over to the Rock Springs Ridge HO, or the, the HOA was turned over by the developer of Rock Springs Ridge in 2005, only to have the golf course sold out from underneath us in 2005 and then closed in 2014. It's a mess. And when you go back and do the history, look at the history of it, it is totally a mess, which is why we are here with our own money, our own community money. We're not relying on county, city bailout money. We are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to right this ship so that the residents, the 1,320 residents of Rock Springs Ridge and the 490 residents who border the golf course, who paid upwards of $15 million for the right and privilege to be on that golf course, can get some satisfaction back by bringing those lands back into our community that they can then enjoy as a golf course again, or an open, open passive recreational land area. This isn't about any one person. It's about the community in total. And anything that we have accomplished, good, bad, or indifferent, including the vote, which was pretty astronomically successful at 82%, and when you read these two articles that are going around, you will see their percentages as well, and we are right there with them. We are unsubsidized, and it's coming off the backs of the people who are living there. And I would appreciate, I guess, as much cooperation as we can get from the city. And as Michelle said, you know, you might be able to sell Harmon Road for X amount of dollars, but the tax base that will occur from developing the 50 acres up on Kelly Park, which is a vacant piece of land for us, will far exceed almost $800 to $1 million a year, and the differential is going to be astronomical.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I just respond to something? First of all, I think that the remark about that I represent everyone, I think that also includes me. So I just want to kind of maybe make that a little bit more clearer, and that is that I am a resident of Rock Springs Ridge, and I am one of the 490 homeowners that live on the golf course. So when I said that I represent everyone, it's not socialist. It's a fiduciary responsibility that I have to at least, to Harmon property. And that's what I, my fiduciary responsibility is to the taxpayers of the city of Apopka when it concerns a city asset, which is Harmon property. I never made a remark, a negative remark about the 51 acres, that the HOA has successfully gotten 82% of the residents to agree to sell. That now becomes a separate business transaction. And so I wish them luck in getting the development rights for it. They have a lot of hurdles yet to cross. So in that sense, Mr. Hoffman kind of compared what's going on in Rock Springs Ridge, which is really involving a defunct golf course, with 9/11, the Louisiana flooding, the COVID, the pandemic. I don't think we really have that kind of relevance to that. And also, Mr. Hartwood has said he's a veteran, and thank you for your service. My husband is a Vietnam veteran, a Purple Heart recipient, and I am the mother of a veteran that I sent my son to war, not just one time, two times, to the War of Iraq for a year and a half, and to the War of Afghanistan. And he is currently serving as a first responder, law enforcement, Orange County. So I too, and I am also retired detective, so I too have served, and my family has served very honorably, not just our country, but our community. So thank you.
And just to finalize the point again, we're up here, and there's a lot of public comment in favor of the action that the Rock Springs Ridge HOA took, and that's fine. That's fair. It went through that process. I'm not advocating one way or the other. I've advocated the last, since April, of having a public meeting that's open to everybody so that they can share public comment as it relates to this specific piece of business. To date, we have not had that whatsoever. So putting all the facts on the table, again, is there even a deal yet for the 51 acres? Have they gone through the process of changing the conservation easement? What's the cost of the communications tower movement away from Harmon property? Should we sell that property for $2.5 million versus $6 million? All of these things have to be discussed in an open forum. And I resent the fact that, you know, again, I don't focus on city at large on all things. I've advocated on many different topics as it relates to the best interests of Rock Springs Ridge and business over the last six years. So if we're just isolating it to this one particular piece of business, I find fault in that argument. But at the end of the day, all of this needs to be discussed in a public, open forum, not during public comment, which you all are more than happy to come up here and do public comment, which is fine. But we're not going to take official decision, make an official decision during public comment or during the mayor's report. This has to be, we discussed the last meeting about a workshop. Let's get a workshop together so the HOA board and this board can come together, lay out all the facts on the table, so everybody is in line, aligned on all the facts. Again, to date, that has not happened, something we've called for, it has not taken place. So I feel like I'm forced to defend myself up here against public comment, and I hate that we continue to have to do this, and it needs to be something that we do during a public hearing, formally. Because every week, every meeting, we're going to do the same thing. We're going to go around and round in circles. And I'm sorry, the gentleman that got up here and said, "I'm curious," because the mayor has stated in the April 27th meeting that he was trying to pitch this idea of land swap and tripartite agreement, but every single public meeting since then, he's walked that back and said that he's not supportive of that deal. So I'm curious as to why you think there's such a groundswell of support from the chair of this board. So again, it just needs to be discussed openly.
All right. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Does anybody need to pull any of the items off the consent agenda? Six items? If not, I look for a motion to approve the six items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, major development plan, the ridge. Jim, are you taking this one?
Gene is here.
Gene's here? Wow.
Gene Sanchez with the Community Development Department. Help me a little bit. This is a request to approve the ridge Phase One, Parcels 2, 4, 5, and 8 major development plan. The project site is located north and south of Boy Scout Road and west of State Road 451. The entire planned development area is approximately 366 acres, and Phase One consists of the development of 275 acres. Shown is the master plan previously approved on July 21st, 2021. Consistent with the approved master plan, the applicant proposes to develop Parcels 2 and 4 for residential uses, Parcel 5 for industrial use, and Parcel 8 for the central amenity and recreational uses. Phase One, shown in red, will also include the construction of Streets A and B, a parallel facility to Boy Scout Road, the trail connection on Boy Scout Road from Binion Road along Streets A and B into the eastern limit of Parcel 8, wastewater and water utility extensions, and reclaimed water connections and off-site improvements. Shown is the overall site plan for Phase One. Parcel 2 comprises of 79.2 acres, in which the applicant proposes a combination of single-family detached units and townhome units for a total of 313 units. The single-family detached units are placed along the perimeter of Parcel 2. Parcel 2 includes its own amenity area, which is centrally located and contains a pool and a clubhouse. On-street parking is provided along at least three thoroughfares. Additional parking spaces surround three sides of the amenity area, and pockets of open spaces are located adjacent to end units. Each detached, single-family residential lot will comply with the landscaping requirements of the Land Development Code, providing three trees per lot. Drake elm, red maple, and magnolia trees are to be planted within pockets of open space within Parcel 2. Parcel 4 consists of a total of 268 single-family detached home and townhome units on 58.3 acres. The applicant has designed connectivity between the north and south portions of the development through a boulevard that connects Parcel 2 and 4. As with Parcel 2, single-family detached units are also located along the perimeter of the parcel boundaries, while the townhome units are in the central portion of the parcel. All units will face a dedicated street. Rear-loaded, single-family lots will have 1,500 square feet of living area. Front-loaded, single-family lots will have 1,600 square feet of living area. And townhome units will have a minimum living area of 1,300 square feet. A separate amenity area for this parcel is also designed in the southern portion, adjacent to the existing lake and pond with a pool and playground. Live oak, magnolias, sycamore, red maple, and cabbage palm trees are placed within the pond, within the ponds and surrounds the open space amenity areas of Parcel 2 and 4. Magnolias and oaks will be located along the connection between Parcels 2 and 4. The applicant proposes these architectural renderings for their residential products, which have been reviewed by staff and meet the city's development design guidelines. Parcel 5 contains industrial uses and five buildings broken up into four phases and will be accessed via two separate points along the spine roads, Street A. Buildings 100 and 200 are included in Phase 1. The access aisles into this portion of the development will also be constructed within Phase 1. Building 500 is intended to be in Phase 1A. Building 300 is proposed to be developed in Phase 2, and Phase 3 consists of Building 400. Buildings 100 and 200 are approximately 146,900 square feet each in size and located on the southern area of the parcel. Building 300 is approximately 116,000 square feet of area and oriented along the eastern portion of Street A. The largest buildings, Buildings 400 and 500 in the center, each have over 420,000 square feet of area. Parcel 5 landscaping consists of live oaks at the end of parking rows. Landscape parking islands internal to the roads will be, will be replaced with more diverse understory trees. Entrances along Street A and one entrance on the eastern boundary of the parcel are embellished with bald cypress trees. The drive aisle between Buildings 500 and 400 are adorned with alternating clusters of sable palms and crepe myrtles. The drive aisle running west to east are decorated with live oaks and crepe myrtles, and the western and southern perimeters are lined with live oaks. Shown is an elevation of the proposed building within Parcel 5. Finally, situated on the central portion of the planned development that includes the existing lake, is Parcel 8, approximately 59.64 acres in size, and serves as the amenity and open space areas for the entire development. Consistent with the approved master plan, Parcel 8 encompasses a visitor and bicycle parking, covered picnic area, dog park, community garden, pavilion, dock with viewing or fishing pier, playground area, outdoor seating areas, bike paths, and pedestrian walking paths with benches. Parcel 8 has a vehicular access, access point on Street A. Parcel Eight has a vehicular access point on Street A, and pedestrian access is available around the parcel boundary via the proposed trail. The trail runs along Street A, the perimeter of Parcel Eight, through Parcels Two and Four, and connects Binion Road and Boy Scout Road. Live oak, magnolias, sycamore, red maple, bald cypress, drake elm, and cabbage palm trees are placed within the ponds surrounds the open area and amenity area. DRC recommends approval, and at its meeting yesterday, October 12, 2021, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed major development plan. The recommended motion is to approve the ridge Phase One, Parcel Two, Four, Five, and Eight major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Good job there, Jean.
Yes.
Any questions for Jean?
Which were the commercial buildings included in the first phase? Was it 400 and 500?
No, sir. Commercial uses are not included in Phase One. This only includes industrial and residential, and the amenity.
Okay. So Parcel Two. Anybody else have questions?
Yeah, two questions. One, and it's not related to this one specifically, but it's an impact. We had talked about, when we were first hearing this project, you know, the issue of the gate at Breckenridge and the backup that that causes out on that street. What's the game plan there? Because as soon as this starts getting ramped up, it's going to just perpetuate that greatly.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. John Prowl with VHB, here representing the developer.
Pull the mic up.
Thanks. Sorry about that. John Prowl with VHB. So we've met, had a few phone calls, and been meeting with the Breckenridge HOA through the process, through our zoning, rezoning process, and through this master development plan process. We met with them last week, and we discussed, you know, three potential options that they could pursue. I think on their side, we've kind of studied their entrance. If you notice, they have a long kind of entrance in. So, you know, one of those options could be to move those gates back. It's kind of costly, but that would be an option. We talked about potentially developing a residence-only entrance and a guest entrance to allow a more free flow, you know, for them, and they're somewhat interested in that. You could also expand the gates, you could leave them open from seven to seven, you know, a lot of communities do that. So, you know, we're working with them, trying to give them good ideas for that. Our first phase doesn't improve, doesn't have a road connection across from them. So, you know, we are committed to looking at that in our future phases, when we kind of make that intersection, a four-way intersection, what potential improvements could happen at that time. But we're just trying to kind of feed them good information so they can make a decision on what they can do.
So the dialogue is ongoing.
Yes.
I just want to be on record, I'm very interested in that dialogue continuing, because it will be an issue, and, you know, obviously, cost of doing something like that is up for debate, but, you know, it's, it needs to get done with all this additional traffic that's going to be going on that road.
Understood.
Yeah, okay. And then, the, I just want to make sure, I was reading it right, so on page 84 on our packet, so like Parcel Two, the north part of Boy Scout Road, is that all in one phase? Because there's a dotted line that says Phase One, Phase Two. But is it all being one phase, the entirety of the north side?
So the plan includes it as one phase, Parcel Two, Parcel Four, and Parcel Five being developed. But we have subphased it, have the ability to construct it in phases. So we're going to go and get all the units approved, designed, and then have the ability just to build it in the two subphases.
Okay, so the subphase on, in case I get questions from Breckenridge folks, right? The Phase One is on the western side of that property, Phase Two is on the eastern side?
Yes.
But it'll all be site-developed, you know, laid out, cleared at the same time?
We're developing the construction plans now, I don't know if that decision's been made, if they're going to, you know, do one phase, clear the other. They might build it all, I think they're trying to decide what's best.
And my apologies, because this is a large package, because it's a large project. The trees, you had mentioned three trees on some of the lots. For a single family, what's the plan for the trees on the front of the properties? What type of, what type of trees? The only reason why I ask is that if we're talking about oaks, like I always go back to my neighborhood, I think we put too many in, and it kind of kills the grass underneath it, from an oak perspective. I just want to make sure that you're allowing enough, because there's going to be so many on that, on this project, that we're accounting for that.
We're going to go ahead and finalize that through the construction site plan right now, because of the width of the single-family lots, 50s, and the ones that are rear-loaded are like 34s, the bungalow-sized ones, can't really handle canopy-type trees like oaks, so we're looking at understorey trees.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Because I heard you say three trees, I didn't catch what they were. Okay, fair enough.
And my question is, the recommendations that you made to Breckenridge, is that going to be financed by Breckenridge, or are you going to assist them with that cost?
Right now, that's undetermined. We haven't made any commitments to help finance them. Right now, we're just trying to give them ideas of what they could potentially do.
Okay, and then the second question, remember the previous hearing, we mentioned that you were going to correct the intersection of Boy Scout and Apopka Court Road?
Yeah.
Is that a part of this phase, or?
It will be. So, Boy Scout and Apopka Road, we have a commitment in our developers' agreement, that we agreed with the city to do some initial improvements to that intersection, which will include raising the elevation of the Boy Scout leg to bring it up. Right now, you'll see there's a huge dip right there, trucks get held up, and I know the fire and safety and police were on top of that. So, the initial improvement is to fix that intersection in a way that the elevations start to work.
Okay.
We're also going to be doing a preliminary design study with Pam's group, that look at the potential long-term, you know, fix for Akoya-Papka. So, we're going to study that from Harmon down to Bradshaw, come back with recommendations that can be implemented there for some final improvements, you know, signals, turn lanes, however, you know, whatever that study shows will be the final kind of build-out commitment.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I had one more. You brought that up, and it reminded me. In our lead impact, maybe it's just a typo, the second paragraph under access transportation says the developer is required to construct a signal at the intersection of Akoya-Papka and Binion Road. Is that, should be Akoya-Papka and Boy Scout Road intersection, or are we doing two signals, one at Binion's side, and then one at Akoya-Papka? Both, okay.
Yeah, thanks.
And that'll be in, that'll be in the transportation impact fee agreement.
I have in my hand the first, the amended transportation impact fee agreement. But the signal at Binion, I think we talked about this last week, about the ramps that will be coming off from the 429, and they'll be participating in that, and the realignment. We're hoping that Expressway does most of it, but there will be a signal there. And I think the signal at Akoya-Papka and Boy Scout will be coming sooner as opposed to later.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Commissioner Banksen?
Yeah, just, I had juxtaposed in my mind industrial versus commercial, I was asking about those industrials. So, will those be in a subphase as well, like the housing?
Right now, that's what it is, except for the access aisles through Parcel Five. Those will be in the very first phase. Obviously, you need access. But yes, Phase One, and then Phase One A, and then Phase Two and Phase Three.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing for a motion to approve. The major development plan for the ridge. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, they might have to fight Rock Springs Ridge for that title, though. That's the short kind of reference to Rock Springs Ridge sometimes, the ridge.
Okay, next up, Orlando Beltway East Development Agreement. Bobby?
Thank you. Good evening, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. This is a development agreement that memorializes the approved master plan and major development plan for the Orlando Beltway East Development. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Bobby on this one? All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the Orlando Beltway East Development Agreement. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Pam?
This is just a real quick item that came up. It's a request to approve the closure of General Electric Road from just east of the 429 ramp, or overpass to Orange Avenue, so that we can add the turn lane. This is a impact fee credit project that's, came from the Goya and Amazon projects on Shelby Industrial Drive. This graphic just shows you where the, where we want to close the road. Oh, and the important thing is, for two weeks only, starting October 18th, through Sunday, October 31st. We gave them two weeks to have the road closed. I'm sorry, I've got this oriented a little unusual, north is to that direction. I just wanted to show you what it looks like and where we're fixing it, and then these two other graphics, so you can see what it looks like now, and the... Okay, thank you. So, north, obviously, and this is east. You can kind of see that tight turn there. And if you notice, right here, there's a fire hydrant, well, it's not there anymore, it's been removed by a turning truck, so, and that also is the city's property. And then, just so you can see the improvement that we're doing, we're actually separating the right and left turn lanes. This is the maintenance of traffic plan. The detour will be for all traffic to go west on GE, north on Hermit Smith, and then across 441, back down Orange Avenue, and vice versa, if they want to come back around. It's about a three-minute detour, which is, I think if we had, if we left one lane open and stopped traffic, you know, one way, it wouldn't be very safe, and I really think it would take longer. And this is a close-up of the maintenance of traffic plan and where you see we're going to close the road. And so, my request is that you allow us to close the road.
So, you said for two weeks?
Two weeks.
What are the hours will they be working?
Well, if they need to work on weekends and night to get it done in two weeks, we're going to let them do that. There are no residential...
Yeah, I was going to ask you, so we're not inconveniencing any residents?
No, and they've noticed everybody that will be impacted by this. You know, originally, they wanted us to close it for a month, and we just told them, "No, they can do it in two weeks." You know, if there are acts of nature that we have no control over, they have to come back to us and ask us.
So, I'm just concerned where the detour is. Is that taking them into any residential?
There are some residents. This is Hermit Smith. There are four or five houses along here. But I, there's not a lot of traffic out there right now. It's mostly the inconvenience to the people that will come out here on, onto GE, that would normally go this way and come south, or come here and go up. This intersection is failing right now, and that's an Orange County and DOT issue. But there's a business here, driveway here, and their driveway is right here under the ramps. And then, this business has two entrances on this side, so they won't be impacted. And this is our property. So you have one business here, and three businesses on this side, and then, this is where Shelby Industrial Drive is, so those all can go up and around. I don't, for what's out here, a lot of the traffic will be Amazon, a lot of it's coming this way anyway. It's two weeks, I think it's safer to get it done fast, just get it over with. We've been waiting for six months or longer to get this done. We were held up by Duke Energy, and now that we're ready to go forward, I just really want to get that safety improvement put in.
Just, just make sure that the residents that are going to be impacted with the detour are notified, so this way, they're aware of it, and they're ready for it, and they realize there's a timeframe.
I had a very lengthy discussion with DeWitt about that a couple days ago.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Pam? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the road closure of General Electric Road.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker, I mean, Banksen, and second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2870.
Ordinance number 2870. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county low, medium-density residential to commercial for certain real property located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lake Doe Boulevard, comprising 2.3 acres, more or less, and owned by Lloyd B. Bearden, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Okay, any changes?
No changes.
No changes. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2870.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2869.
Ordinance number 2869. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from county A1 Citrus Rural District to city CC Community Commercial District for certain real property located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lake Doe Boulevard, comprising 2.3 acres, more or less, and owned by Lloyd B. Bearden, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, no changes.
It's the north...
What's that?
No, I'm just saying it's the North Orange Animal Hospital.
Okay. Do you have, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2871.
Ordinance number 2871. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District to C Corridor Commercial District for certain real property north of East Welch Road and west of Rock Springs Road, comprising 3.99 acres, more or less, and owned by Mary F. Reed Estate, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Any changes, Jim? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2871.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2881.
Ordinance number 2881. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Apopka by amending Chapter 46, Parks and Recreation, Section 46-3, permit for group activities to refer to the Parks and Recreation Department by amending Chapter 46, Section 46-4, hours of operation to appropriately reference the Parks and Recreation Department by amending Chapter 46, Section 46-7, use of picnic areas to appropriately reference the Parks and Recreation Department by amending Chapter 46, Section 46-8, miscellaneous regulations to provide for domesticated animal regulations in city parks, providing for codification, severability, providing for conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes, Brian? All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion...
I do have just one comment, I want to make sure that we have the proper signage with this being changed, so people understand if someone's there, that other, someone doesn't come along, saying, "You're not supposed to do that," you know, that kind of thing, so I think we need to make sure.
Yeah, because with the Saturday sounds, I saw a couple of people with their dogs, and one of the rangers kind of told one of the residents to leave with their dog. But I had, you know, I said to him, "It was approved with the first reading, we can kind of be lenient." So, and he's right, just have some kind of signage that we are welcoming the residents with their dogs, but the restrictions are, need to be posted with that also. Thank you.
Okay.
So, okay, you wanted a motion?
Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2881.
Velazquez, oh, I mean, Velazquez.
Motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, I'm going to see you out there with your two.
Ordinance number 2883. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Apopka by amending Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 6-3, possession or consumption in public place to authorize Parks and Recreation Director and Development Review Committee to permit possession and consumption in public parks, providing for codification, providing for severability, for conflicts, and an effective date.
No changes, okay. Anybody? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2883.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2021-48, Gladimir.
Resolution number 2021-48. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021, providing for a budget amendment.
Good afternoon, Gladimir Ortega, Finance Director. Resolution 2021-48, amending the budget for the fiscal year October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021, amending the airport fuel sales fund, airport fund, and sale of the property based on the approval for the airport sale that was provided during the council meeting held on August 18, 2021.
Okay, any questions for Gladimir? Okay, anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close a public hearing, look for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-48.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson, second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
So, does that mean that we're out of the airport?
Hallelujah.
Out of it, okay.
Yeah, I think it was, we're spending, I think our fleet staff, I want to say half a day every three or four days, just going down to make sure that the fuel was safe and proper, and so we'll free up some actual people, you know, hours in our fleet by moving that, so anyway.
Actually, Mayor, I had one of the staff members say to me, "Please thank the city council."
Yes, oh, okay.
Okay, so Resolution number 2021-56. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, providing for a budget amendment.
Resolution number 2021-56, amending the budget for fiscal year October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, and this amendment includes six budget amendments. The first one is for the Florida Department of Transportation regarding the Apopka Distracted Driving Program grant for police staff overtime, and that is for $25,000. The second one is the Florida Department of Transportation grant, and that is for the arresting impaired motorists for police staff overtime. Those are all grants, and that is for $15,000. The third one is for the Florida Department Transportation Grant, and this is for the heavy enforcement of aggressive traffic for police staff overtime and speed measurement devices, and that is for $49,000 a grant. The fourth one is for the Florida Department of Transportation, and this is regarding the Resolution 2021-44. That was the FDOT Resurfacing and Restoration and Rehabilitation of US 441 to extend the life of the existing roadway and to improve safety along the corridors. And this was part of the escrow agreement that was improved via the city council meeting held on September 15, 2021. The fifth amendment is the Apopka Individual Distributed Waste Water Treatment System related to San Joan River Water Management District for the Florida Spring Grants, and that is for $243,015. And the sixth amendment is the carryforward for the appropriations for fiscal year 2021 that were carried forward into fiscal year 2022, and there is an exhibit on your package that includes $40,460,775.65, and the copy with the detail is included in your package. If you have any questions, I'm requesting for adopting Resolution number 2021-56.
Okay, any questions for Gladimir on this? Okay, all right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close a public hearing, look for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-56.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, city council reports. Commissioner Velazquez.
Oh, okay. I'm glad we got there. First of all, just kind of recognize that we were at the unveiling for Alonso Williams. If anyone in our community has an opportunity to go to the Alonso Williams, the Billy Dean Community Center at the Alonso Williams Park to see the mural that was painted by one of our Apopka residents, the talented Delia Miller, who is a former Apopka High School senior. It's a really beautiful mural. I know it's been posted on Facebook by the City of Apopka, of course, on my page, but if you get a chance, you have to see it in person. It's absolutely just amazing, and it's stunning, and what an honor for our former commissioner, Alonso Williams. And he was there with his family, and he was really happy and proud that, you know, he was there to actually see his mural, so. And then, I attended the Armando Borges Golf Tournament over at the Redtail Golf Course, and as always, the fire department puts on a great fundraiser to honor their fellow Armando Borges, and it was a successful golf tournament. It was completely sold out, so, you know, kudos to our fire department. And then Saturday Sounds, which we started this past Saturday, we had Blue Stone Circle, and it was a gorgeous day, sunny, and as always, it was just a perfect day in the park for our families. And that's it.
Okay.
Commissioner Bankson? Again, to echo that mural, it's fantastic. Very talented lady, and I told her, you know, when you're rich and famous, I can say I knew you in this town, so. That is tremendous, and I encourage people to go there. Unfortunately, I began to get some symptoms that I didn't think people would appreciate me sharing, so I had to miss both the golf tournament and the other events this weekend, but it's always exciting to see that go forward, and that's why.
Awesome. Commissioner Smith?
Well, I challenged a young lady in drawing that did the murals with my stick figures, you know. So, obviously, she won.
How'd you win?
She won, but an outstanding job that she did for a young lady, so we appreciate what she did and the opportunity to recognize Alonso Williams as our city commissioner. A great turnout, great event. I too missed the golf tournament this past weekend. I start to say unfortunately, but I'm blessed that my youngest son got married this past weekend in Jacksonville. It was an outstanding event, and so I was there to support him and to officiate as well. We'd like to know if we have a status on the grants for the fire and police.
Commissioner, we do not. I hope to have something for you in November, at the first meeting in November, to bring you, you know, a full recap of everything, of where we are with all of them.
Okay.
So, I'll give you an update then. Hopefully, by then, we will have even more notices, we'll have notices.
Thank you.
Mr. Becker? Nothing, okay. Next up, Edward.
So, Mayor, Commissioners, I have a couple items on my report this evening. The first one I wanted to, real quick, it wasn't on my report, but I handed you a fact sheet from the Department of Treasury, U.S. Department of Treasury. It talks about the coronavirus monies that we've received, how they were distributed, how the percentage was allocated, how they will distribute the money to the city in the two phases. It talks about the different uses of where the funding can be used, the specifics of where it can be used. It also talks about where it cannot be used, so there's a section at the bottom of the areas where you cannot use those dollars. So, hopefully, real soon, maybe, you know, I'm hoping in November, the November meeting, we can come back with kind of a little plan, a set plan that staff has, but in the meantime, I wanted you to have that, so you could kind of at least see the, you know, where they can be spent, and we'll go through those. And because I think what is important is, one of the things I think we really need to be looking at is looking at our grant opportunities, what grant opportunities we're, you know, we're going to have here coming up soon. Look at things in our budget that, you know, that in our five-year plan, I think we need to kind of be thinking about everything that's on the horizon, so that we can, you know, make sure that we use these dollars.
Is this separate from the American Rescue?
This is the American Rescue.
Oh, okay, so we still don't know if we're going to have a workshop to decide how the money is going to be spent or allocated?
That's what I'm giving you now, I'm giving you the fact sheet now, so you can be familiar with all of the do's and don'ts of the plan. And then in November, I want to bring back, I hope to bring back, one of the meetings in November, I'm hoping to bring back to you a plan of all the different items that we've got, you know, from our budgets and the different ways that we can spend the dollars. Keep in mind, we received, we will receive a total of seven, a little over $7 million. We've received three and a half currently, and we'll receive the other three and a half 12 months from, I think, June, I think it was. And keep in mind that in your budget, during your recent budget workshops, you allocated a million of that to road resurfacing, so. But anyway, so we've got some things that we want to, we'll bring back to you in November that...
Well, when you say you'll bring back to us, would it be easier to kind of do a workshop so that we... Because when you bring it back to us, it's been kind of decided by the staff.
If that's, if the council wants to do that, we can do that. We can do a workshop, maybe do it on the same day that we have a council meeting, so that we can, you know, kind of, we'll have that workshop and then, you know...
I think that would be best.
Okay, if that's, you know, if that's...
The only thing I would, you know, ask when we get to that point is that we, by putting, like, if we put a bunch of $50,000 items on there, it was going to become more problematic for our finance staff and Edward to keep track of it with the federal government. So, my request, my ask of this council is that, I don't care where we spend it, I mean, obviously, I do care, but let's try to put bigger chunks of money into fewer programs so that it's easier for us to track and easier for us to make sure that we're in compliance with the federal government. So, that's my only, my only ask.
And I'll have more information to be able to give out at the workshop, we can...
Yeah, because I feel at the workshop, you would be presenting some recommendations, but at least you would have an input.
Right.
If you bring it to us as an agenda item, then we go back and forth, and, you know, it becomes very, you know, a discussion, and then, you know, if we don't agree with it, but at least at the workshop level, we can, you bring us...
Right.
The recommendations, and if we have an input, it allows us to have an input.
Absolutely, we can put that together.
And so, you know, I'll consider what the mayor's asking of us. In other words, have big projects so that we can be held more accountable.
I think, yeah, I think that's important, I think, because of the filing, you'll see, and we'll say that, well, in the workshop, you'll see a little bit in the fact sheet here about the filing requirements and everything, there's a lot of burden, a lot of paperwork. So, you want to make sure that, yeah, that, you know, that we're doing the best we can with it. But we'll have some suggestions, Commissioner, and then, and by this, you'll be able to see where it can be spent, so we'll be able to show you some areas, you know, in the budget where we think this, you know, these dollars will help with some of the things that we have in our budget plan that could be funded with this source, whatever. But I wanted you to have these facts, this information first, and then we'll follow up with a workshop and try, I'd like to, if it's okay, I'd like to coincide the workshop with a council meeting, so we can kind of have that workshop and then, and then follow up with, if the council wants to take some action. So, with that, my first item, so we've been through the interview process for our Public Services Director. You have the resume in front of you. The gentleman that we want to, or that we're going to, we would like to recommend tonight is Deodat Boodoo. Am I got it right? I've been practicing. So, you have your resume in front of you. He has 36 years, over 36 years of experience, a lot of experience. He has been the author of several publications, some of their great publications, some of the ones we've talked about right here in the City of Apopka when it comes to resurfacing programs. He has a lot of experience in roads, stormwater, water resource. He currently has retired from Orange County and said that he's ready for a challenge. There's a challenge here, I promise. So, he said he's ready for a challenge. So, you've had his resume, you've had a chance to sit down with him, you've had his phone number, you've had a chance to sit down with him one-on-one and ask questions, and so I don't want to waste any more time. I'd like to, you know, bring him up, so if you have any other questions or anything for him, let him come up and answer any of your questions. But I will ask for, this is an action item under this report, and we will, I would like to ask for the ratification of the position.
Yes, okay, well, as he's coming forward, I just want to, you know, when Edward and I were calling his references, a lot of them from Orange County, a lot of them came back with, "The guy works too hard." I go, "That's interesting." So, when he came in to interview with Edward and I said, or the second interview, I said, I said, "Deodat," I said, "I got a request, one request from you, and that is that, you know, you only put in 50 hours a week." I said, "You can't, you can't, you know, at your age, 70-hour work weeks will not work." So, anyway, I was so excited to bring him forward to you, and so if you've got any questions for him in a public forum, here's your opportunity.
And Mayor, during the interview, when I met with him, he asked that we be patient with him, so he has a 45-minute speech for us tonight.
I didn't have a chance, I didn't have a chance to speak with you prior to the meeting. I was too busy reading your resume, because Edward sent me the email on Monday, and I just got done reading it right before this meeting. It's filled with a lot of projects that you've been a part of, that you've led, so from an experience standpoint, I really don't have any questions.
No, I actually spent a lot of time with him. In fact, the mayor came in the office like, "Bankson's here." And that was way over my time.
You've been in my time there.
I was way over my time. So, no, welcome to Apopka.
Yeah, Deo, of course, we had an opportunity to speak, and I really appreciate what you're bringing to the table, the fact that you've come from a place where we're ascending to, we're an emerging city, and I think the expertise that you bring, and also the philosophy that you bring in creating team and building people in that, I was very pleased with our conversation there, and obviously, the resume speaks for itself, so welcome to the family.
Thank you. All right, with that, look for a motion...
The only other thing I'd like to add, and I think this is very important, because it's been a big, on my mind, the whole time as we've been through this interview process, I think what Deodat brings to us, it's very critical, is the partnership with Orange County. His years of experience with Orange County, and as you know, he has a lot of experience in roads, stormwater, and as you know, our system is this side's in, that side's out, we own this part of the road, we maintain the lights and sidewalks here, but not the road, we have the stormwater here, but not that. So, I think he can bring a lot of teamwork, a lot of, you know, putting us together with, working together with Orange County as we move through, you know, how all of our process works with the way all of our streets and everything is kind of, kind of, you know, intertwined together. I think that's a huge benefit for us.
I certainly can attest to his ability and his expertise, because I sat in the Planning and Zoning Board for Orange County, and I certainly, that's where I can't, when I saw you, I said, "He looks familiar," and you actually have sat, you know, through the P and Z hearings at Orange County.
Mayor and Commissioner, I just want to really thank each one of you, right, for providing me this opportunity, and I want to assure you that I would never fail you. I will work my diligently to make sure I meet and exceed each one of your expectation. Mr. Bassett, thank you so much for the opportunity to join your team, right? I can tell you this, it's kind of unnerving after spending 30 years in one place to come and join a new organization, but I think the challenge is there, and that's what I want to meet and to make a change and make a difference to the city. So, I can give you my word, I will work as diligently and as hard as possible to make a difference, so that I never fail you. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Yes.
You have 40 minutes left.
See, I'll tell you the other thing, that was really impressive, is he's real big on SOPs, so standard operating procedures, which we lack, or even have any. So, I think those are the kind of things that will get us to the next level, and so, yeah, we're...
I'm a big part in that. I'm very, very well in streamlining when I work in the county, all the management I wrote with the help of a good secretary and everybody else, and, you know, and I would want to do this here as well. I leave a legacy there, I'm sure I want to do here as well.
Yes. Okay, with that, need a motion to approve Deodat Boodo. Yes. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
So, I have one more item. As you, in your packet, you will see that, Commissioners, and let me first point out, this is not an action item, so I'm not asking for you to take any action on this item tonight, but I am looking for is maybe, you know, consensus or some direction. But, so, we received a request from the South Apopka Ministerial Alliance for a couple pieces, a couple parcels that we own across from Alonso Williams Park, and they've offered some consideration for those parcels, but they have a plan to do some affordable housing in that area across from the park. some affordable housing in that area across from the park. One of the things I want to point out to you, there are, there are four parcels in that thing, as you can see in your packet, in that section or that, that area across from the park. With these two parcels, I know they are also working to try to make contact, well, there's another little parcel, if you notice, out there on the end, a big parcel, that they're trying to make contact with, with that individual as well, to see if there's something they could, if they couldn't get that parcel and kind of put all that together and do some nice affordable housing in that area. That is their plan. So, but I, one of the things I do want to point out is, because we talked about this not long ago, we talked about parking. We had talked about, we were going to use that area for parking for our Alonzo Williams Park. So what happened, so where we are today is, there's property to the backside of the park that we talked about, maybe trying to see if we could acquire, whatever. We're not going to, I don't, we're not going to be successful to acquire that. It's got restrictions, it's got some things on it that, you know, that I don't think we're going to be, be able to get that, that, those parcels. But here's what I will tell you that we were able to do. If you recall, we're doing a grant currently, we have another grant in the Alonzo Williams Park on the Washington Street side, and we were making some improvement, we're making, we already have those, you already have that funding, you've approved that funding. And we're going to be making some significant improvements there, we're going to have the trail, put in some sidewalks, we're having a gazebo, some picnic tables, some benches, and we're also putting in an additional parking over on that side, in that area. And so what I did, when I went back to the staff and I said, "Hey, you know, we got 23 par- 26 parking spots on the front and in the parking lot that we currently have." Currently, we have 26. And so that original plan only included about seven spots that they wanted to put in on that backside. We went back to the engineers and public services and we said, "Hey, can you get us some more parking out of that, in that area?" And they were able to get 10 more spaces, didn't alter much of the footprint or anything, but they were able to get 10 more spaces in that area. So that's 17 new additional spots that we'll have in that area. And of course, it'll, you know, it'll have sidewalks up to the playground, it'll have sidewalks to our park, to the building and everything, so it'll have access to the building. So that gives us 43 spots for that park, which we think is sufficient enough. We think that's good, we think, you know, 43 is better than 26. And so we were able to get some more spots out of that and that will all, most of that will all be paid for, hopefully through our grant, because it was just a small tweak that we made to the grant, to get those additional spots out of there. So with that being said, because it was, you know, keep in mind, this spot, we were always talking about, we will make sure we have enough parking at our facility. So we feel like we will have sufficient parking with this new addition, with this grant. So with that being said, the request before you tonight is to offer that property or, you know, come back with an agreement with that property for the South Apopka Ministerial Alliance to do some kind of affordable housing in that area. As you know, we don't have a lot of that and we haven't done much of that. This would be very good, I think, for our community, as we hear this from a lot of places in our community about affordable housing. I think, you know, I think it would be a good fit too, to have this kind of housing across from our park. It's a good place for our park, to kind of, you know, have ownership in there right next to our park. So I think, I think it's a really good thing from a staff level, we think it's a good thing. The thing I would say to you is, what I think you should do is, again, tonight, this is just a request that they've, they've asked, I would look for consensus from you, direction from you, to bring back to you a plan of what this is going to look like, so that you have, you know, you know what it's going to look like, what, what kind of the conceptual plan is, and then an agreement that, you know, you would approve an agreement. So those are my thoughts. I know there's some members here from the South Apopka Ministerial Alliance, but.
From a, from my understanding, there's a chap, the Florida Statute, Chapter 166 that drives inventory of city-owned property. If we dispose of it for affordable housing purposes, we have to do some sort of inventory of that, is that correct? It's Chapter 1660451? I just want to make sure that we have all our ducks in the robe as we march to do this. But then too, I agree with you, Edward, that having a concept plan for what that looks like would be helpful for us to visualize that, because, you know, I think, I agree, it's a, it's a spot that makes sense to do that type of project. I just, concept-wise, I think it would be beneficial to see it, and then a little bit more about how it's going to come to fruition.
I agree. Yeah, one of the things we've, we've done is, we've, we've had, tried to reach out to the homeowner that's out in the corner, because if we can really get that piece, it really makes a nice, you know, the whole place flows. And we haven't gotten, we had a couple realtors look at it, and I know that Commissioner Love and a couple other folks have reached out, tried to find, you know, some. So we end up sending, I had Jim Hitt send out a certified letter just to see if we can get response, because obviously I know every, you know, I probably get three calls a day from people wanting to buy land, they don't even know if I've got it or don't have it, but they, you know, call. And so maybe, you know, a certified letter from the city might get somebody's attention to open it and, you know, that would really, you know, so I think we've got some time to try to see if we can work through that, that corner lot. And then by that time, you guys will have a conceptual design, either including or excluding that, that piece there on the corner, and then we can come back and present that to the council.
And I love the, the fact that it's utilizing the community as well to make this happen. I just love the whole of that and, and I really agree, bring us something that says this is what it's, this is the end product, and something that we can really, you know, show to the city that this is, this is something that we've needed. It just really fits that and I appreciate you all working together to make this happen.
Mr. Velazquez?
Same thing, I mean, I had spoken to Rod Love and I know that this has been an ask of theirs since my early, first time, my first term as a Commissioner. And I know that the property has been sitting there for almost 20 years. So just the fact that you're willing to take on this project says a lot. And it's a good time because there is a lot of development going on and it will provide, you know, affordable housing to the community there, because I know that a lot of the residents on, on the south side of Apopka are concerned about the development that's going on all around them. And it, you know, will it include them? Will they be able to afford to get, to take that extra step up from where they're at? And so if we can show them and show the community that we will provide, you know, a home that they can move maybe from an apartment and to own a home and it's affordable to them, that's what we want. We want to be able to keep our residents in our community, especially those who want to be in our community. So absolutely. So I agree with our chief administrator, Ed. It's just to get past some of the little hurdles right now, but to bring a plan so that we can fully support it and say, you know, we're, we're behind the Ministry Alliance. We know that this is what they're going to do.
Commissioner, record it to confirm, yes, it's 1660451, which are the Disposition of Municipal Property for Affordable Housing. There's two subsections. One is that this, every city has to have a list of those properties that could be earmarked for affordable housing. And then the sale of, of that property, if the intent here is a sale, the statute provides that the proceeds of the sale can be used to fortify any fund that the city has in order to assist in affordable housing. Also, the sale can have, can be contingent on a restricted covenant placed on the property to guarantee that it will always be reserved or used for permanent affordable housing.
And so with that being said, and again, during my time at council, I've never really seen that list, I'm just wondering if it exists and do we have to do that from a procedural step prior to taking action on this particular piece?
Well, if this isn't, if, I don't believe so, if the property, if this is just property that has been, if the city hasn't previously earmarked this property as property that can potentially be used for affordable housing, there's no prohibition against the city selling the property in the, the future, or the city can present forward. I don't know, I need to, I would need confirmation whether the city has such an inventory list, if the city wishes to actually adopt a list and have, and have such a list of those properties that could be earmarked for such a use and then, but the sale of which, that it's, the property can still be sold with certain, with those conditions that it be permanently reserved for the, for the use of affordable housing, as well as the proceeds of the sale being used to bolster any funds the city may have for affordable housing.
And this is in the CRA?
Correct, yes.
Yes, it is, yes.
So that, that's a, I think that would be something that we could use is a list of the city properties that, I should say, that the city owns these lots in the CRA.
We can get that, we can get that together. I know we've worked on some other ones, I know Mayor's worked on some other ones, and Michael currently on trying to get some of those lots. So we can put something together to give to you so you know which ones we currently own.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, let me first of all disclose that I am a member of South Apopka Ministerial Alliance, so I want to make sure that it's known. And I too agree that this would be an ideal project. We've talked about affordable housing, the need for affordable housing here in the City of Apopka, that we don't have the inventory for affordable housing. And so this would show a commitment on behalf of the city that we really stand behind and we really mean what we say, that we would like to have affordable housing for our residents so that we can retain those, the brightest and the best of our residents to come back to the City of Apopka and remain here where they can afford to live. So I totally support this idea.
Thank you. Thank you, Edward. Appreciate it.
So do we need to make a motion to give staff direction or?
No, you've, no, you've pretty much given me your consensus from what I'm hearing, so we will move forward with working with the Alliance and kind of conceptual plan and agreement, kind of what it'll look like. And we'll bring that back to you once we can get through that.
I'd like to thank Pastor Bradford and Pastor King and Rod Love for coming down and supporting. Not supposed to, but come on. Next time you will have all the time you want, four minutes worth. All right, okay, Michael, anything?
You heard enough from me last week, I think I'll do it to myself this week.
You get a week off? Okay, all right. Under the Mayor's report, a couple of things already brought up about the mural by Dahlia Miller, incredible, Armando Golf Court, Golf Tournament, the number I heard was about $12,000 raised, so really good. Just to give you a, a real quick on, I had a meeting with Mayor Demings, and you've got the letter in your packet from Mayor Demings as to the workforce housing at the town center. Just, we were trying, I just want to reiterate that, you know, and he was still surprised that either Jim Hitt or myself didn't know that that was a part of this project, but did deny that we, you know, there was nothing in writing that showed that we had approved this agreement based on affordable. So just, that's just to kind of clear that error. Next up, along that with the meeting on that, with Mayor Demings, the city's legislative budget request, we've got $2 million in the, in the current budget on the House and the Senate side for the Border Lake slash, Lake Pleasant slash Lake Page, you know, flooding issues. I don't know if you saw today, there was a lane on 436 that was closed, we were trying to find the abandoned drainage well, and we went down 18 inches, through 18 inches of asphalt and cement and everything and never, then all the way down to seven feet below the surface of the road and still didn't find the drainage well. So anyway, what we, what we're looking to do is one of two things. One is to replace the drainage well, which we're, we're confident that was there, that's been covered over, to somewhere near Border Lake, to rehabilitate two additional wells at Lake Page and Lake Pleasant. Or I think an alternative that, from an environmental standpoint's much more, I think, effective is, we've got a, we've got an easement that Utilities Inc. uses to bring water from the Wicava area down to our plant on Cleveland. So what we're, what we're talking about is pulling off the excess water off Porter Lake, off Lake Pleasant and off Lake Page, taking it to our, our site on Cleveland, treat that water to a reclaimed water standard and then put it into our system. So that's about a $4 million project, you know, the best we can, we can tell, the replacing the drainage well and fixing the other two is about a, probably a $2 million fix. The, the problem, I think, with the drainage well replacement and fixes is that, as we all know, Governor DeSantis is pretty keen on environmental issues and putting a drainage well within a mile or a mile and a half of Wicava Springs is probably not going to sell at the state level. So I, you know, I just want to make, you know, Mayor Demings, you know, aware that, you know, we might not have that as an option. So the question for us is, you know, we, we need to get DOT to partner with us, Orange County's obviously a partner, a good partner, and we need to have Seminole County, who is also a part of the problem, needs to be a part of the solution. So this should come down, hopefully we can get the $2 million from the state legislature, another $2 million from the four partners I've mentioned, to come up with a project I think will be really unique, but, but not only clean up the water, but also give us, you know, millions of gallons of reclaimed water for our citizens here in Apopka. So we'll see how that goes, I'll keep you posted as it goes along. They usually probably be the first, first meeting in December is when they start the budget hearings and we'll, you know, we'll keep an eye on it. And Mayor Demings committed his, his, his staff, lobbying staff, to help us push that through the state legislature. So next up, the Apopka Fire Department, along with the Gina McReynolds Foundation, it'll be selling T-shirts here at City Hall and also at the Saturday Night Sounds. So if you wanted to get you a T-shirt to support the Gina McReynolds Foundation, they're $20 online, they're $25, so, you know, come on down and get one. About the Saturday Night Sounds, Commissioner Velazquez and I are both there, it was a good, good turnout, gave away some trees, I think we still have a few, I think we have a few trees left over, so if you want some cypress trees, where, where do we get them, Brian?
They're, they're a part, a part of, between Luthen and Red Sox.
Okay, so they're going to be there for, until they run out, we probably have 500 cypress trees left, so anybody out there that wants a cypress tree, come on down and grab one. Absolute Queen coming to town on October 23rd, so should be a, a great event and looking forward to that. So with that.
And I do think we ought to address the elephant in the room, the pink elephant. Anyway, you look good, of course, it's for breast cancer awareness.
It's breast cancer awareness, yes. And so, yeah, so Tim, Tim Clark and I, we're, we started out the month with this, and so I'll end up the last commission meeting with my pink jacket on, so thank you, everybody.